...stands, "One Nation Under God, Indivisible with Liberty and Justice for All."
Good morning and welcome to the May 27th County Commission meeting. I'll remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly. And Ken is in the front row with listening devices if you need them.
Routine business. First item will be to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Say it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Second item will be to approve the county commission minutes of 5/20/2014, and there will be a correction made on a lien compromise. And Ken, would you care to reiterate what you told me earlier?
Yes, in your packets in the minutes, the resolution that is there for the compromise of lien is incorrect. The actual action that you took, remember there were three liens that were attached to this property. Two of them were in the ex-wife's name only, and the other one was held jointly in both names. This particular resolution does not reflect what action you took, which was to release the lien against the real property only for the two liens that were in the wife's name. There was no reference of payment being made in that action. In fact, that's an action under consideration today since you now have a full commission. So that resolution needs to be corrected, that it lists those two liens, and it's just against the real property for those two lien DPNOs against the ex-wife, and that was 56895 and 62884.
I'll make that motion with the amendment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from last week with the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Bills to be paid in the amount of $462,585.57.
Paying bills with a comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Comment from Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chairman, this week's bills include $176,000 to Metro Communications. It's passed through.
Any other comments? I have a motion and a second on the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Personnel actions to consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Move for approval?
Say it.
I have a motion and a second on routine actions. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Number six item is application for abatement. We have Kyle Helsa.
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning we bring before you four requests for abatements. These are for a veteran's exemption that was granted during the local or the county boards of equalization. The first one is record ID 15320, and the property taxes in the amount of $1,053.30. The second is record ID 14198, property taxes in the amount of $1,460.76. The third is record ID 15978, in the amount of $1,365.71. The fourth and final is record ID 73683, in the amount of $334.95.
Make a motion to approve all four of those abatements.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions for Kyle? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Kyle.
Item number seven is notice and requests. The first one would be to authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders for the purchase of conducted electrical weapons for the sheriff's department.
Ken McFarland. Are there any questions for Ken? Good morning.
Can I, just to touch on the subject, about in February, we started a review, this is about the fourth time we've done this in my career, of the use of conducted electrical weapons for law enforcement as a less lethal option. Common name for them is tasers. And so I assigned a committee to review the use of those devices, that option for officers. And ultimately, the recommendation and my decision was to provide those for our officers. We were able to look at existing grants that we have, and also through a grant from the Attorney General's Office Drug Asset Forfeiture Fund, we're going to be able to fund these without going into general fund or budgeted request. And so this is the formal process of starting down that road.
Are there any questions for Sheriff Milstead? This is just the approval for publication of notice.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve publication of notice. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item B on notice and requests would be authorize county auditor to post notice of hearing of a proposed joint spending plan for the 2014 Burn Justice Assistance Grant between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Michelle Boyd, Chief Deputy with the Sheriff's Office. We come to you every year with our annual allocation for the Burn JAG, and for 2014, the city of Sioux Falls was allocated $70,599 to spend on law enforcement-related expenditures. We have a disparate allocation with the city. It's a 65-35 split, which means this year the city will receive $45,889, and the county will receive $24,710. We've attached a basic spending plan for you to review, just some relevant information about this grant. The spending plan illustrates the proposed use of our funds. The awards are made in the first fiscal year, which will be 2014, and the total grant period for this will be four years. The Sioux Falls Police Department is a partner in this, and the city grant is being passed through the sheriff's office. On our end, Kristin Tranal will be the one who administers the county portion of the grant. The county is proposing that we spend this money on some training that's listed on your sheets there. We also have some equipment and some office furniture that we would wish to purchase, and also some additional ammunition that is not in our general funding. The city is also here. Their plan is to purchase some conducted electrical weapons as well with this 2014 Burn JAG grant, and we would request authorization to post notice of a hearing, a public hearing to consider this spending plan, and we're looking at the date of June 10. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Michelle? I have one, and Ken, go ahead.
Just for your information, at that same time, after you conduct a public hearing on this on June 10th, we will also have a memorandum of understanding for you to take a look at as far as outlining the procedures for expending the funds.
Michelle, the grant period is over several years. Does that mean they repeat those funds every year, or you have that many years to spend your $24,000?
We have that many years for this spending plan. The tasers that we're looking at purchasing are from different grants years after year, and we're reprogramming some of that money that we didn't use from past grants. So we have four years to expend it or to reallocate it.
Okay. Any other questions for Michelle?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to authorize the county auditor to post notice.
Say it.
I have a motion and a second to post notice. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Michelle. Thank you.
Item number eight, planning and zoning notices. Authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing to consider text amendments to the 2002 revised joint zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls on June 24th, 2014 at 5:00 PM at a joint meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission and the Sioux Falls City Council.
Good morning, Scott.
Good morning, Scott Anderson, representing the Minnehaha County Planning Department. Yes, as the auditor indicated, I'm asking that you authorize a hearing notice to be published for a meeting to be held on June 24th between, at 5:00, with yourself and the city commission to consider some major revisions to our zoning ordinance. This would be in regard to solar energy conversion systems. We would be adopting basically wordage, how we would be handling solar energy generation, and it would create a definition for solar energy conversion systems, and then would allow them as a conditional use in four districts. And this is coming before you because there is a request, some interest out there to perhaps construct a solar energy conversion system, which would be about a 1.5 megawatt plant.
Any questions for Scott? I look for a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize publication.
Madam Chair, I would just say that at the planning commission meeting, the people proposing this were there, and this is really an interesting step for our county. You know, I would note one thing is that with the solar panels, that critters can run around underneath them, whether they're pheasants or whatever, and so it has a lot of good things going forward.
I have a motion and a second to approve authorization of publication. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item number nine is a petition for compromise of lien, DPNO number 58675, in the amount of $1,701.10, and this item was deferred from May 20, 2014. Commissioner Pecus, please.
Thank you. The four of you have already discussed this, so I'm the only one that's going to be briefing myself, which I've already done. But for the purpose of the people that are watching, on May 20th, 2014, the commission considered a compromise of lien application, and the applicant currently is attempting to refinance his home. There are actually three liens on the property, as Mr. McFarland just indicated with the correction to the minutes. Both of the original liens were actually released primarily because they were incurred after the divorce between the applicant and his ex-wife, and those were actually tied up with her obligations. The third, however, was in relationship to a lien that was incurred due to the legal representation of some minor children. And of course, anytime you have an attorney appointed to represent children, it becomes the obligation of both parents pursuant to statutory law that they're obligated for the lien that's incurred for the representation of those minor children. So even though the applicant and his ex-wife were both divorced at the time, they're both responsible to pay that bill that was obviously incurred at the cost of the county. So at the time, last week, apparently it was a two-to-two vote, there was a similar vote, or excuse me, there was a similar request back in February of 2013, last year, to refinance this particular home. At that time, the commission approved a compromise of the lien for the $638, which was requested this time as well. And unfortunately, in that particular instance, apparently the refinance was not successful, and the applicant did not pay the compromised amount. If the compromised amount does actually extend out through the year in which it was made, it actually goes back on the rules at the original amount. Because the commission actually lowered the amount $638, that payment wasn't made. It automatically went back to the original amount. So apparently, he owes, both he and his ex-wife owe $1,063.10, and of course, his application is to have what was done back in February of 2013 in the amount of $638. The applicant lists assets of approximately $7,135, which includes the value of the home. He has liabilities of $107,000. He is employed. He has an annual income of about $30,000. And of course, we have the information that was previously submitted available for everybody to review. So at this point, I suppose the question's going to be whether or not the two-to-two tie can be broken, and I'll make a motion to deny the lien at this time, and I'd ask for a second so I can explain my reasoning.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to deny the lien with a comment from Commissioner Pecus.
Thank you. I guess in looking at this, back in February of 2013, this commission went to the extraordinary steps of actually compromising the lien by half to allow him to go ahead and refinance. But remember, the refinancing of this particular debt was for the purpose of him actually closing on a new house. And in this particular instance, a year passed without any payment made, regardless of whether the refinancing was done. I just don't see a huge effort on the part of this individual to go ahead and to pay his obligations. $638 was actually sitting there. We would have accepted it up and through February, and quite literally, he dragged his heels on paying it. To be honest, part of me says, to be consistent, we should go back to the $638 we agreed to. But then I also see people that come here every week and make $20 payments on their liens to try to whittle it down, and then they come forward and they ask for a compromise. At this particular instance, we gave them a compromise, regardless of whether there was going to be a closing or not, and quite honestly, no action was taken. So I can't see myself going and extending this offer again for a second time. So I know it sounds harsh, but you know, when you give somebody the opportunity to make a payment, and they have 12 months to make that obligation and follow through on it, it's disappointing when they don't do that. And so what's the old adage, fool me once, shame on you; fool me twice, shame on me. So that's what I'm going with. So that's why I made the motion.
I have a motion and a second to deny the compromise of lien. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Barth? Excuse me.
I have just a quick question. On the application of the petition or statement, at one point, it said notes payable to the bank, and now it changed the name of the bank to the IRS.
I wish I had an answer for you there, Commissioner. I don't.
If it's a lien on the IRS, the IRS has first lien on everything. So it appears to me that this is unfortunately changing the rules sometimes in the middle of the game, and I agree with you that we gave them an opportunity once before to get this corrected, and it's not been, and I don't think we should do it this time.
Any other comments? Commissioner Barth, this time.
Thank you. I do think a $20 payment would have been apropos, but an additional thing is that I don't see the income tax things, and oftentimes, people get multi-thousand-dollar refund with, you know, earned income credit or whatever it is, and he forgot to think about us at that time.
I have a motion and a second to deny the compromise of lien. Any other comments? Take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously to deny the compromise of lien. Next item is opportunity for public comment. This is the time that anybody that would like to speak about something that's not on the agenda can come forward and talk about that. Good morning. Do you want to identify yourself?
Good morning, Ron Weber from Southern Minnehaha County, 466-31, Berry Drive. We have been here numerous times, and the old adage of the buck stops here. I guess I'm back wondering, nothing has happened out in our situation, and I'm wondering again, what does it take to get people to do their job?
Commissioner, then again.
Mr. Weber, I have a couple of comments, and frankly, there are people who have pursued this multiple times. We have a listing of the number of times that Scott Anderson, our planning and zoning director, has been out there to correct this. I also asked for some information from the state's attorney's office. It's my understanding that the county sued this individual in 2007, and we lost. So you want us to go back and sue this gentleman again for the same thing?
And you lost on what basis?
I wasn't here, but the information that I was given said that we lost part of that conversation or that ruling, and I don't have the details. Maybe Kirsten does.
Yeah, I can add to that. The individual that we're talking about, the one you're complaining of right now, he was charged with some unregistered vehicles, I believe, on the premises, and also the operation of a home-based business. And the judge, from the records I see, acquitted him of both of those counts. There was a different chief civil deputy here at the time. He handled the case, as well as an assistant or a deputy state's attorney. So there are two lawyers on that case, from the notes I saw. As I understand it, substantially the same allegations that are being brought forward right now.
I'm not a legal advisor, but I don't think you can be charged for the same thing twice, if I remember correctly, unless it's some differences to it.
Well, even if you could, if they're substantially the same charges, I would question bringing the same charges against the same person, not expecting the same result.
Mr. Weber, I guess really what I kind of view this as, the difference between a public nuisance versus a private nuisance. And if you feel as though your property value or your property's being negatively affected, you could go and hire your own attorney and bring an action under private nuisance against this particular party. That would be your choice, but at this point, I think that would be your best avenue. Once again, the county's toward that, and unfortunately, we were not successful. Perhaps you would be successful in your endeavor.
Well, he still has vehicles parked on the right-of-way, a propane tank on the right-of-way, and I don't know, it's been numerous weeks, and nothing has happened.
Ken.
And he's still operating his business out of there, and maybe that's one of the counts that was talked, you know, about earlier. I don't know. I wasn't there in '07, but if this started prior to '07, it's been a long time, and nothing has been done. And he's been issued three building permits, and someone that you've had a lot of trouble with, do you just go ahead and keep issuing building permits? I find that kind of unusual. Thank you for your time.
Oh, here, a couple weeks ago, I did get a phone call from Mr. Weber, who did complain about the propane tank and some unlicensed vehicles, and that I forwarded that information to Scott's office, and Mr. Anderson did in fact go out and look. The information that we got back at the time was that the propane tank was being exchanged and was going to be removed yet that very same day or the day after when the propane company got out there to move it. The issue about some other vehicles in the right-of-way, and that I did not report that to Scott until after a second conversation that I had with Mr. Weber that said, well, there's some trailers there as well. I forwarded that information to Scott. Scott said, yes, he saw it. He says, if those trailers are in the right-of-way, he says, it's very, they're not in there very far. That was the comment. Why the propane tank hasn't moved yet, I don't know, because the information that Scott had received, and I'll let him speak for himself, from the property owner, was that tank was being switched out and would be removed very shortly.
Commissioner, Kelly.
Is the propane tank still there?
Yes. I'm David Knoll. I'm from the same area. The person in question is my adjoining neighbor, and he's been there 12 years, and he's never been abided by the zoning laws since he's lived there. It started with a semi-trailer with a reefer running all night in his front yard. And then it went to several unlicensed junk vehicles, having one license plate on two pickups, which he got nailed for. And there's so many things that you wouldn't want to listen while I had time to tell. But there's also an issue of having certain number of company pickups, you know, on the property. I don't have the paper here, but I got it to home. And as far as this trial is concerned, I have a complete transcript of it. And the state's attorney was, there was two guys there. I don't know if you were one of them.
I was not.
The other one is a judge now, little guardian. Well, when they seen Erickson's lawyer walk in the door, Mr. Dorothy, or whatever his name is, they just, oh my God, not him. And then they were scared like rabbits. And that was the poorest court proceedings I've ever seen in my life. I paid 400 and some bucks to get that recopied. I don't have it with me today, but if anybody up here wants to read it, I can get it.
Kirsten has it.
Actually, I don't have a transcript of that. It was never ordered by our office, so.
Now, that is the biggest joke of a trial I ever seen in my life. And this Dorothy, he kept rambling on and letting Erickson talk about how much money he was raising with his mud racer for the fire departments, and it was totally irrelevant to the trial, you know. That wasn't the issue. That should have never been spoken. And finally, the judge evidently had a golf date or something, and he just said, well, come on, let's get this over with. So as far as the trial was concerned, that's the biggest joke on the planet.
I don't think we can go back to what the trial is, and I think we've gotten advice from the commission as far as we can't do anything else about it. We have been following up with every complaint we've had, and I think we would continue to do that.
Now, there's other issues there now that weren't presented at the trial. That was whether you have, he has three company pickups on the property. Two is the limit.
I think we've given you advice that we have.
And the trailer's limits are 22 feet, and one has got to be over 22 feet.
Thank you.
And the noses are sticking out past the right-of-way. And he's still got one piece of junk there that he didn't move from the last episode of getting rid of this unlicensed stuff.
And we've had Mr. Anderson go out and take pictures and look at it, so.
Well, this enforcement's the biggest joke I ever seen. If you fail wants to, you just throw up your hand and say, that's it, can't do nothing.
I think we've continued to work on it, and Scott can check on the propane tank again. Maybe just a follow-up call, Scott, again, and see when that's moving out of the right-of-way. Commissioner Kelly.
You know, apparently, some of these issues are covenant issues. I don't know if the covenants are out there, and the rest, and there's a few legal issues. But we have, you know, regarding the building permit, he's not been charged with anything recently that I know. The propane tank, you know, it should have gone. We've checked on it. We received assurances. Now we're going to have to check on it again. But planning has spent considerable amount of time going out, checking this out, and seeing if he's involved. You know, if he's only a foot over on the right-of-way, I think that's a little picky. But, you know, you do have the opportunity of public input, but there's not a lot, you know, we can't not issue a building permit if he's within, if he's complying with the law on it. And there's no law against a messy neighbor to an extent. I mean, you can't, we don't legislate who the neighbors are and who they aren't. People move into areas with covenants because they want that protection. That's a private matter, and it's not a matter of the commission. But I, I'm not sure it's fair to call that a monkey trial or whatever. Obviously, there were inferments made there that were not fair, you know, regarding golf game. I think we've given, you know, we've paid attention to this thing, and we'll continue to, and...
Well, it's never been resolved.
Well, it...
It's been going on for 12 years.
It's never risen to the problem, it's never risen to the issue of something that can be resolved.
Pardon, I didn't get what you said.
Well, he's within the law. He's within the law in his home business. I mean, the court ruled on his home business, so we can't go out the next day and charge him with something that he was just ruled he was in compliance with.
Well, according to your laws in planning and zoning, you're allowed two vehicles for company issues. No trailers, no skid loaders, and all this other related equipment that's set around there all winter.
You've taken this up with the planning department?
Well, yes.
They're the people in charge, I mean, that's...
I've been there a dozen times. They're just ignoring you.
I don't think Scott's ignoring you. He has been out there taking pictures, and he has been out here...
Well, why hasn't the situation been remedied?
Because he must be in compliance with what we have.
He's what?
He's in compliance with the laws that we have. Scott, did you want to speak about it this place?
No, he isn't, or I wouldn't be here.
Or Scott wouldn't be telling us it was a problem, or Scott would be telling. Why don't you let Scott ask, answer the question?
We went out there one time, and I asked you about, how about this Mitsubishi that don't have a license plate on it, been sitting there all winter? I didn't see no Mitsubishi, he said. Well, it's sitting in the front yard. If he didn't see it, I don't know why he even comes out for it, if he can't see that vehicle.
Scott, you want to comment?
As you know, I'm Scott Anderson, the planning director, and you've tasked me to be in charge of code enforcement for the county.
of code enforcement for the county. It's also my duty to interpret the zoning ordinance to the best of my ability. And when I look at this situation, Mr. Newell and Mr. Weber have brought up issues that primarily, a lot of them deal, revolve around the home occupation or the business that's being run out of that home. And yes, there's, there are some vehicles that come and go. The trailers that he has mentioned, they are licensed commercial vehicles. Some of the other vehicles that are, that have commercial license plates are pickups that Mr. Erickson uses to go back and forth to his work site or jobs. When I look at this and, and when I look at the situation, to me, those vehicles are all part of that home occupation. They're all part of the business that we did try to stop in 2007. The judge, you know, found them not guilty, acquitted them. I don't believe that we would want to take that back to court. I think that we did attempt to bring them into compliance. The judge said, no, it's illegal, it's legal, what they're doing. So really, we're right back to taking them back to court for the same thing. As for the propane tank, I got a call on the 15th that there was a problem. I went out there that day. I took pictures. Yes, it is in the right-of-way. It, it's sitting off to, off the side of their driveway. I called Mrs. Erickson. Actually, I stopped and talked to them, and then she called me later to tell me that they got a larger propane tank. They, as a courtesy to the, the Feral Gas people that are, that own the tank, they do not own the tank, the tank is owned by the gas company, they pulled it up, they thought it'd be easier for them to get to if they put it along the side of their driveway. That's what they did. She indicated, Mrs., the property owner, Mrs. Erickson indicated, they had called, they were waiting for the, the tank to be picked up. They want it off, they want it off the side of their driveway as well. The gas company, she said, was, was backed up, that they would get to it when they could. You know, it's their property, and, you know, I, I didn't think it rose to the prob, to a real problem or a nuisance. Is it breaking the spirit of the law, the letter of the law? Yes. In my investigation, I determined that they had taken measures to correct it, were waiting for that to occur. Every time I've gotten a complaint, I've gone out there. I've been out there in the last year that I've been working on code enforcement, I've been out there six, seven times. I've taken pictures, I forwarded, you know, the pictures to my liaison, I've kept him informed of what has occurred. I've discussed the issues with our state's attorney's office, so it's not like I've ignored this. I've, I think I've paid plenty of due diligence and attention to this problem.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Should we move on?
I just have a couple of comments. Number one, the vehicles that he's making reference to, the red one, sat there for six solid months and never moved.
I think you're going to have to take this, a civil action against this. I think we have exhausted what we can do.
And I guess the other thing is, like Dave indicated, the ordinance says two vehicles, stored or parked. Well, three is more than two. So are the ordinances not worth the paper they're written on? It appears that way.
Madam Chair, I think we've gone long enough here. It's been more than five minutes, it's been more like 20 minutes here, and I suggest we move on.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's nice.
Yes, it is.
On regular business, item number 10, public hearing to consider rezoning request number 14-04 to rezone from the A1 agricultural district to the C commercial district, the east 120 feet of track two of Old Tracks, exhibit H1.
Madam Chair, could you bring this room to order?
Six conversations going.
You have to move the conversation to the hallway, please.
Thanks.
Located at the corner of South Dakota Highway 115 and County Highway 122, Scott Anderson.
Thank you once again, Scott Anderson, representing the planning department. Today you have, is the public hearing for an adoption of a rezoning request. This would be for rezoning 14-4. The property is located at Midway Corner, which is the junction of South Dakota Highway 115 and 122. This has been before the planning commission. It went to the planning commission at the April 28 meeting. It was recommended unanimously for approval. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately .29 acres from A1 agricultural to C commercial, and I will go through a couple of pictures for you. So basically, this is what is often called Midway Corner. There's the Valen gas station and facility here. This is Raven, the big Raven facility. The applicant would like to rezone the east half of this property. There is an existing residence here. The applicant is in the process of obtaining this property from this property owner, and he's rezoning it to C commercial. It's him, it's his intent to develop a small repair shop in conjunction with his existing Valen oil and gas station business that he has at this site. I can show you a couple pictures. The, this is, you can see the corner of the house. Back in here, in this wooded area, is where the rezoning is to take place. This is the Valen gas station or Midway Corner. And the applicant would be, you can see the house right here, the applicant would be coming back this hill, and it would be back in this area. This shows the property looking towards the Valen oil. There's some dirt work that's going to need to be done there. This shows the Raven plant, which is directly to the east. And this is from the property looking to the northwest towards the, the Valen oil facility. And this is on the property looking at the Raven industry. This is, there's a property pin that sits right back in here. This wooded area is the area that the applicant's going to get, or is attempting to purchase and now attempting to rezone. And this would show the driveway that would be used, and it would be right behind this white building. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions for Scott at this time?
I'd move approval on this.
This is a public hearing, so are there any proponents to this project? Any proponents? Are there any opponents to this project? Seeing none?
Restate my motion.
All second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the zoning. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item number 11 in regular business is authorize the chairman to sign a right-of-way purchase agreements for land acquisition for replacement of structures 50-142-120 and 50-143-120. Jason Reeves.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, Commissioner. It's Jason Reeves with the highway department. In our design for this project, which is on County Highway 126 just to the northwest of Crooks, a couple of things came about. In our standard, we go out and acquire more property around these structures that we're in, that we're replacing. This is for maintenance in the future so that we don't have to ask for permission from the property owners. This is our area now. We go through, ask for mainly a donation around these, which is, which is the $1 on the .08 acres. And then in the, the right-of-way purchase, we found through our research that the right-of-way along Highway 126 was just over 41 feet, 41.25 feet. As a standard, our highway department is, is acquiring more right-of-way when possible to get our right-of-way to 50-foot on each side of center line for a total of 100 feet. This would be in the, in the instance that we would rebuild a highway, we can rebuild it to our standards with nicer shoulders, wider shoulders, nice ditches, just for a more safe highway. So along this, this segment of roadway, we approached the property owners. There was just the one that was willing at this time to, to, to sell. She was not willing to donate this, but she was willing to sell it at the average acre value for this township, which was $8,300 per acre. It was just over a third of an acre, so it was a total of $3,238. She was willing to sell this to us to get us to a 50, 50-foot right-of-way in this area. It's about a 2,000-foot stretch on the south side. So we're asking for approval and signature on the documents to purchase these areas.
Questions for Jason?
I have a question too. Commissioner Kelly.
This really is important, but I like to know where it is. I mean, you got a vicinity map down here that shows me nothing.
Okay.
Where, is this out by Wall Lake?
Nope, it would be from Crooks, about a half a mile north, which is then County Highway 126.
Oh, it's 256. I thought it was 266.
Nope, sorry. And then about a mile and a half west. County Highway 126 is only about three or four miles long in this area.
It'd be nice if we had something just to give us some relationship to work, because I don't know all the county highways.
Okay.
But otherwise, the other question is, is this kind of an opportune deal that, at this point, none of the other property owners are interested in cooperating?
Correct, that is correct. It is an opportunity deal that she was willing to sell that extra 8.75 feet to get us to the 50-foot. We've been, we've tried this on another project in the more northeast area of the county, which was not a project. The only project was to try to acquire right-of-way. I think you discussed this a few weeks ago with the, with the county highway superintendent with some of the issues we may have been having up there. But we would like to try to get the 50-foot each side of center line, 100-foot total right-of-way on our, on our paved county highway system for the reasons that I had said with the, with the better, safer roadway system.
Jason, whose standards are these that we're looking at?
They're not only our county's, but they're, they're, I don't know if they're totally a federal highway standard, but they are a, for safety standard to get four to, four to one slopes on the ditch edges is recommended by federal highway, along with a standard for shoulder widths, and that depends on your speed limit. And then, so by the time we get out, as wide as the roadway asks, and then with a four to one, the 33-foot right-of-way widths are definitely not wide enough, and 40 is still awfully tight. That's why we'd like to go to 50, which just makes it, makes it more easy, makes it easier and more sensible to grade it out that way.
She's got, there's two different, there's three points on here. One of, by the first landowner to give a dollar for .08 acres. The second one is for this other person to give for a dollar, .0 acres. And then the third is that .39 for the over $3,000. Is that different property that she's giving? One of them is for a dollar, and one of them is for?
Correct. The $1 would be for our, what we, our standard around the new structure. It, it's a jut out around the structure, wider in that area. Like I said, for our maintenance crews to be able to get down there and clean the channel, do anything that they have need to with the structure in the future. And then the, the additional is for 8.75 feet for approximately 2,000 feet. I believe the plat is, the plat is attached on the later part of the memo. I believe it's about 2,000 feet linear along the roadway. The structure right-of-way is only 100-foot length by 25-foot width additional.
My concern is that we're setting a precedent by buying property for $3,238 for a right-of-way. Commissioner Barth.
My question is completely different, I guess. When we do have that full right-of-way, is there room to have like a bicycle lane painted along the side of the road, or?
Our shoulder, yes. If we were to put a six-foot lane on there, that would be wide enough to build a bike lane.
Because right now, right at the white stripe, generally, it's.
A foot or two, yeah, typically on most of our county highways. There are, there are others that have four-foot shoulders, but most of them are only a foot or two outside the white line, which is pretty narrow.
That was my question, thanks.
Or also, if we're going to do that, we're going to be tearing out entire highways, redoing them.
I'm not saying that, I'm just wondering if we own the right-of-way, if that would at some point allow for that space.
Any other questions? For a motion.
Move approval for the chairman to sign this right-of-way agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments? I will not be supporting this motion. Commissioner Benega.
My only comment is, is I understand the reason for doing it on one side, but it appears that it's an all-or-nothing benefit to us to have it on both sides. So are we just increasing the price on the opposite side of this to the other landowners by setting a precedent on what the value of that acreage is? And frankly, that amount of width in the city of Sioux Falls is not a big deal, so why is it a big deal in the county?
The, the eight feet or the 50 feet?
The eight feet.
It, it depends on a lot of the slopes. If we have a, if we have a really difference in grade from the edge of the road to where the field would be, that's where the, that's where the eight feet would probably become more critical. If it's a pretty flat, even area, that eight foot probably wouldn't come into play. We would probably be all right with 40 feet for all of it, but I guess that we're just, we're trying to make a, a standard. And it was 41.25, and we're, we're just attempting, as we go through these projects, to acquire, if needed, the extra right-of-way for 50 feet. And like you said, it, it would come into a full reconstruct situation, more than likely, to actually utilize the full 50 feet. You know, it, it's not a maintenance item. It would be more of a full reconstruct scenario that we would actually come through and utilize that.
I guess my question would be, is if we use this standard for the entire county on the areas that you would like to buy that width, what kind of value are we talking about?
It's, it depends on a lot of difference, a lot of different things, in my opinion. It would, the type of land, is it pasture land? Is it where the homestead is at? Is it where the cropland's at? Is it a swamp? I mean, that, the, and then, like I said, we use, we use the average for the township of the 8,300 an acre. Other townships, I know, are, are higher than this, being, one being the, the part in the northeast corner that we had, that we had gone through the attempt to buy some right-of-way up there. We found that the, the values in that area are higher, and then there were some farmers up there that had purchased for much more than that, and were not willing to sell for the average for the township. It was much more than that, and that's kind of where the, the wrench was thrown into that whole project. So is it setting a precedence? To an extent, but I mean, like I said, it's, there's some opinion to it, too, on what, on what each parcel is worth.
Have there been any accidents there?
Not to my knowledge, no.
If the day comes that we're going to reconstruct that road and we need the extra feet, if the landowners want a wider road in that area, I think they'll be willing to look, donate, work with the county, but for us to just go randomly around and buy 50 feet or whatever of Priceville's property at the asking or the standard price for a project we might or might not do, seems a bit ridiculous to me. That's still $3,200 we're spending on something we're not even going to do. Commissioner Barth.
I don't disagree with you, except that I think it's going to cost us a lot more in the future. At the current rate of growth of the city of Sioux Falls, it'll be a higher population than Minneapolis by 2013. So in 100 years, it'll be more populous than the city of Minneapolis.
And maybe at that time.
Will this land be cheaper then? I don't think so. I think as it's possible for us to acquire the right, right-of-way, that we should go ahead and do it. And that's why I support it.
Any other comments? Commissioner Kelly.
Well, I think the chairman makes a pretty, you know, good argument on this. I do think, you know, engineers are used to looking at lines and, and I don't think anybody on this commission is an engineer. It would be a lot easier to make these presentations if you not only had the location where
you not only had the location where it is in relationship to a count, but also the areas. We got a GIS department that does an excellent job, and it would be just as easy to pull a map up and bring it with the presentation. I haven't got a clue, I'm looking at a piece of paper here that's blank. And I, based on that, and I think I'm more likely to agree with Cindy on the argument that, what are we gonna do with fifty feet, when the rest of the colony is, or the whole rest of the section, if it's all farmland, is still at the standard, at the old standard?
Dick, it's two and a half miles from my house.
Well, you would know about it.
I know what this is.
But the rest of us don't.
Commissioner Beckus?
Well, this last weekend, I was actually having a conversation, Mark Greedstrom, who used to be one of our state's attorneys, state's attorney at the Millbank. His son, Kyle, is an engineer in Bismarck, and civil engineer, primarily doing roads, roads that are failing dramatically in North Dakota. All they do is go around and try to find which, which bridges are failing, to try to keep them propped up, because of the amount of traffic that they're getting with, of course, all the oil traffic. Interesting conversation, to say the least. But, when I look at this particular circumstance, you know, it is, I seconded the motion, but then I'm also very mindful of what, obviously, what Commissioner Heiberg indicated. And, you know, it's really difficult for us to work with our constituents when they're unwilling to allow the kind of improvements that they'll be demanding in the future, but they want top dollar for, from the county and the other people of the county, to get that extra few feet. And unfortunately, I seconded the motion. I don't think I'm going to support the motion, primarily just because of the conversations that we've been having here. You know, if they don't wanna have the improvement made, then, you know, that's unfortunate, but you have to meet us halfway. When I started on this commission, here we turn the Wayback machine again, we used to do this kind of stuff on a handshake. I mean, it's scary, but we used to do that on a handshake. And we've been trying to correct that, and quite honestly, it's gone full the other pendulum to almost like a shakedown. And, you know, okay, fine, they win, you can keep it. And so, maybe that's the position that we should take.
I have a motion to amend.
I'd like to amend the original motion to eliminate item number three, the purchases of the point three nine acres.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to eliminate item number three. Why would we even want, I guess, one and two have to do with the bridge.
Well, it is, I believe one and two are opportune acquisitions.
Well, and they have to do with the bridge.
And for a dollar, but I do agree that number three is very questionable.
I have an amended motion to eliminate number three from the original motion. Vote on the amendment. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed saying sign. Motion passes unanimously. So, now we have an amendment to the original motion, so that makes the original motion...
To do all but number three.
To do all but number three. So, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed saying sign. Motion passes unanimously. You may have one and two.
Thank you. We will get you a revised document for the other one also.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Reeves.
The next one is Minnehaw County Commission Liaison Reports. Are there any reports? Is there any new business? Ken? I know what this is.
New business? There had been some conversation, or some thought, that perhaps we might consider not having a commission meeting next Tuesday because of the election. However, we do have a posted, or a published notice of hearing to consider a right-of-way, or, excuse me, a street vacation that we'll have to do. And I have other couple minor things that we could move, and it didn't really matter. But, if you have, I'm just saying, it looks like we have to have a meeting next Tuesday, but we'll keep it very short.
So, the street gets a vacation, but we don't?
You don't.
You had one yesterday.
Is there any other new business?
Well, Ken, is, the street vacation, is it a controversial thing?
I'm not aware that it will be, Commissioner. However, that was the published notice, and letters have been sent to the adjoining landowners, et cetera.
So, they'll be here.
They'll be here.
And whether they're here or not, I don't know. But, we have completed that process with planning and zoning.
Is there any old business?
Elections. Bob, we had a, we used the huge voting centers, you know, in the last election. And just to be clear, for everybody that's watching, we're going back to the old precinct locations. I know it was in the Argus Leader, but I just wanna be clear that, you know, we're gonna send out the correct message.
That's correct, Commissioner. For this primary election and the general election, we will be going back to the old precinct-style election method. And I have spoke with Peter about this, and we're gonna try to get that word out. Also, there was a number of locations that were not available for precincts this time, so we've shifted some of those. And then we've also shifted a couple due to ADA concerns. And then, you recall a while back, Brandon, we lined the precincts up with the ward. So, there's been some movement of precincts, but we're hoping to get that word out. All voters of the places that we have changed up locations, we will send a voter registration card as late in the game as we can, so it's something that everybody remembers, and that way we get as many voter registration changes in on that as well. There's been a couple of specific ones. Last week, I had a couple of them pulled by the school, and so we've done some additional signage on those. And then Commissioner Heiberg, just a few minutes ago, talked about the Baltic location, which we're moving a few blocks away, and getting some additional signage for that, too. And we will, we will get that up as well.
Commissioner Kelly?
Bob, if I remember, at least one of the driving forces on this thing a long time ago, was that we would have centralized voting places where it was consistent, whether they were voting in a city, a school board, or a county, or election. Are we gonna continue to try and get down that path, so that, so that I don't have to decide which election this is, to which poll I vote?
Yes, Commissioner, we are, we are gonna consistently have the thirteen locations that the city and school chose for e-poll centers, you know, vote centers, as precincts. However, the confusion is gonna come, that you will not be able to go to, let's just say, First Lutheran Church up there was a vote center. You'll not be able to go there unless it was your precinct. And so, just so hap-
Have we given up on the other one?
Well, as you recall, Commissioner, it was this commission's decision not to let me go with the e-poll books a while back, and so we just, we just went back to the old system, yes.
Well, I think, if I remember correctly, we just wanted to get more comfortable with the whole situation, and we, I didn't think we were saying this'll never happen. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's the way I am.
Well, you know, I think the future's always open on these things, Commissioner, and, you know, I thought that perhaps the commission, if they saw the city election, you know, being successful, that that would encourage that type of thing. And then, I also have some homework to do on connectivity out in the county. And obviously, during this election, that's not gonna work. And Mr. Wadamba, you know, he's short on help for me to go on out there and find these things out. So, until I devise a method for paying for some help to go check these, the hinterlands out in the county, I call it up county, because that's where it's at from here, to find these things out, why I'm kind of stuck in the mode that we're in currently. And I thought it would just behoove the public to have the next two elections. If we're gonna do one of them precinct-style, let's do both of them precinct-style, and we'll start with a fresh slate after the general election, twenty-fourteen.
Because I think the people are, that's, they're uncomfortable with the way it is right now. We may understand it up here, although I'd have to look on the map to see where I vote. But, you know, the point is, I think we wanted to do this thing, so that you know this is a voting center, this is where you go to vote. And if you're, and you can, with the electronic capabilities we have, you can vote anywhere, as long as you're in the county.
And I think we're not ready yet, because morally, it will not work.
I realize that, but I'm concerned that we aren't, I don't know, what have we been on this thing, two years? I'm not sure the progress has been what I would call sufficient.
And I agree with you, Commissioner, there's gonna be some growing pains, and there's gonna be some upset voters when they go to the voting center and find out that they have to go back to the precinct. We're gonna try to get the word out as good as we can. Like I say, all the voters whose precincts have changed location, whether they're a few blocks away or more than that, we're sending out a notification card. I think I can safely assume Mr. Herriman will have some questions for me after this meeting. And I also take out a shopping news ad, and then the legal requirements that we have for publication in the Argus Leader. And I would also be doing kind of a media blitz the day before the election on Monday, to try to get all the TV stations to put the word out. So, some effort has been planned for trying to get the word out. But unfortunately, due to our situation, there probably is gonna be some confusion.
Is it also online?
Yes, the new locations are on our website for the county, yes.
Commissioner Barth?
Well, let me say, I have seen the technology at work, and I certainly do believe in it. However, I believe that we ought to have the poll books deployed at all of our regular precincts. I think that the current system keeps people from being able to vote. Certainly, that people living south of Fifty-seventh Street had only one location in this last election, south of Fifty-seventh, and it was, I could throw a pebble that, I could shoot a marble that far, just across Fifty-seventh Street. So, I think that the, for example, the area south of Sioux Falls, in the southern part, that was opposed to Walmart, they made sure that those people couldn't vote. The Secretary of State has a record of trying to keep Native Americans from voting. I think that the elderly people that live at the Prince of Peace, where my mom used to be, they weren't able to vote. And I think people without cars, they don't get to vote. I was at my barber shop, and a fellow said he went to vote, and his polling place was closed. No one could tell him where to go, but they said you can vote anywhere. Can you vote at Hy-Vee? Can you vote at the barber shop? No, you can't vote anywhere. The fact is, it's very confusing for people. People are being disenfranchised, and it makes me angry. I would be happy to have the technology developed where you could vote anywhere, at all of our seventy precincts in Minnehaw County. I think that would be a great idea. The current system makes it so that just a few get to vote, and I don't like it.
I think one of the concerns is an IT concern, and that is where we have continued to wrestle, is that we do not have the connectability in the rural area. That being said, I think we can go on. I am looking for executive session contract negotiations and personnel. Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed saying sign. Motion passes unanimously.